Call to order the March 22 meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll call on Councilmember Yurha, who will lead our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I would just mention a few recent Cary milestones that people might be interested in. We'll start with the 25th anniversary of the Stevens Nature Center. If you're wondering where the Stevens Nature Center is, it's at Hemlock Bluffs Nature Preserve. And if you're wondering where Hemlock Bluffs Nature Preserve is, you're missing out on one of Cary's real gems. Great venue for young and old alike. We hope you get out there, check it out on the town website, and congratulations to them on 25 years for their nature center. We moved from 25 to 35, and that was just last Saturday. We had Cary Arbor Day at the downtown park, and we were presented with a 35th Annual Tree City USA Award by the Arbor Day Foundation. Thirty-five years Cary has received this, and we're very proud of that. We go from 25 to 35 to 50, and make mention that this is Dorcas Ministries 50th anniversary this year. They'll be celebrating in different ways all year, but they've been a wonderful partner to the town of Cary for 50 long years, and we wish them well. And then there's 150. And that's the Page... No, it's not Jack. I heard that over there. It's the 150th anniversary of the Page Walker Hotel, which is right next door. It was built in 1868 and is still standing today, thanks to successful preservation efforts, public and private alike. There are events going on all year there. September 15 is their big celebration day. And of course, 150 years of the Page Walker is a precursor to 150 years for the town of Cary. April 3, which is, I think, 12 days from now, is Cary's official birthday, and we'll be 147 years old on this April 3. Three years from now, there should be a big celebration, and efforts are already underway to plan for that. And lastly, is a milestone that's related to our town clerk, Ginny Johnson, who right now is getting very mad at me for embarrassing her. But she has just earned her Certified Municipal Clerk designation from the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. To do this requires completion of extensive coursework and pertinent and practical experience. You have to be in clerkdom for two years in order to get this. Ginny started working on this from day one, and just last month, celebrated two years as our town clerk, and within days of that, received this designation. And I don't think there could be anybody doing it any faster or any better than Ginny has. So kind of like Hemlock Bluffs, we consider Ginny a real gem of Cary. And now, I ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Yurha. Very well done. First order of business tonight is to adopt the agenda with entertain a motion.
Sumut.
Second, there's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentation. And our first one is a fun one, is from the Citizens Assisting Police, and I'll recognize Chief Godwin for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. We are excited to be here again for our annual presentation of the ceremonial really big check from the cap team. I want to start with a quote that I heard one time, and it said that volunteers do not necessarily have more time, they just have more heart. And if that's the case, I can tell you that we've got a tremendous amount of heart here in Cary. As a matter of fact, I just asked for clarification to make sure I had the number correct, and I'm told that we now have 182 cap team volunteers working here in the town of Cary. And I think that's phenomenal. And I'll also tell you that for years, they've been threatening to overtake the number of officers. They've been saying that we're going to have more volunteers than we have officers. And I'll also tell you that we're getting pretty close, so in a couple of months, I'm going to be asking for about 27 extra officers, because I need a little buffer. But we'll get to that later. The cap team group is just amazing, and they, as you know, help us. They work for every Town of Cary special event. They work at every Project Phoenix event. They help us out with every DWI checking station. And they also have perennially done a lot of work with refurbishing bicycles that they give away to those in need. And I had the really cool opportunity this year to attend the Three Kings Parade and Celebration at the Herb Young Community Center, which was an Hispanic celebration. And I saw they had, I didn't count them, but probably, I would estimate 35 to 40 bicycles that the cap team had refurbished and gave away to children at that celebration. And I can tell you, they were very excited to get it. One of the coolest and newest ways they've been utilized this year is the TSA out at RDU utilized our cap team members as bomb detection decoys for their canines. Now, I think they should get extra credit recognition, because that doesn't sound like something that most sane folks would want to do. But I'm sure it was very helpful to the TSA in helping make sure that our airports stay safe. So, you know, they just do an incredible amount of work, and we're so very proud to have such a huge cap team to help us out. And so tonight, to do the presentation, we of course have Ms. Ingrid Wright to do the actual presentation. We've got our cap team president, Mr. Neil Harper, behind me, and this whole cast of wonderful people sitting up here, cap team volunteers here as well. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would join us down here.
And I just wanted to add on to it that this year is almost 5,700 hours, which equals this large celebratory check. And as I always tell you, don't spend it all at once. But I can also tell you, which I find even more fascinating, is that I calculated the first year we gave out the check to then-Mayor Ernie Alister was 2004, and I know you've said that many times here already. So I calculated from 2004 to today's date, and what we have saved at Town of Cary in our volunteer hours actually represents $1.5 million.
Wow.
So that, I thought, was something to celebrate tonight, too. So without further ado, there it is.
I get to see these guys like once a year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Christmas dinner.
Beer, and then the annual dinner at the end of the year. And I can tell you, it's like a family. And they love each other, and they love what they do. And that's what makes not only you special, but make you special within our town. You love what you do.
And we love our town.
And thank you.
And our police department.
We love our police department, from the bottom of our hearts, not only from the bottom of the policemen's hearts or the police department's heart, from all citizens of Cary. Please know that you're greatly appreciated and loved for all that you do for our town. Thank you so much. Thank you. Now we move to our second item. Not that yours isn't exciting and appreciated and loved, too, but maybe not with that much excitement. Mr. Stiegel, the Town Manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have a standing order that I'm never to present after Chief Godwin, but I guess since it's on the agenda, I have to anyway. Well, thank you. As you know, our budget process has gone from an event to an ongoing proactive, flexible dialogue between the council, the staff, and the community throughout the year. And as we continue to move forward in future years, you'll see that work more and more effectively. But no matter how flexible our budget gets, there will always be a period of time where the creation of the document is more intense. And so, we are officially in that period, and the town staff have been working closely for the last several weeks in conjunction with Stacy and Karen and the entire Budget and Finance Department on developing townwide priorities for the recommended budget. I will work with the team in April to finalize those recommendations to you, and then on May 3, you'll receive... Is the chart up there? Yeah, there it is. I can see it right here. You'll receive the recommended budget. At that same meeting, we will hold a public hearing for utility development fees in accordance with the requirements of a new legislation regarding those said fees. Our first work session on the budget will be part of our third quarter meeting on May 10, and we also plan to follow up on June 7 with any remaining questions you might have and updated forecasts. If we need more time to focus on the budget, we can easily call for a third work session, a fourth work session, whatever you guys might need. The formal public hearing on the budget will be held June 14, and we have many more opportunities to hear from the public, which Stacy will explain momentarily. Ultimately, the council is scheduled to consider adoption of the budget on June 28. Now I'd like to turn it over to Stacy Deitchy, our budget manager, to fill you in more on the many ways our citizens can add their voice to our process moving forward. Stacy?
Thank you very much. So as part of our efforts to keep Cary great, we listen to our citizens' priorities all year long, not just during budget preparation. We also offer multiple outlets for public comments. Last year, we heard the most from citizens by Facebook. Email was the second most common form of communication, using the email address budgetinput@townofcary.org. We provide a voicemail box available 24/7, year-round, at 919-469-4307, and we'll hold a budget-specific public hearing on June 14. Citizens are welcome to express their budget thoughts in person throughout the year during the Public Speaks Out portion of regularly-held town council meetings like this one. Requests for public comment will be repeatedly advertised throughout the year on our social media. In the near term, a note will be included in the Bud newsletter to be delivered to homes from late April to late May. A public input reminder will be included within the message that citizens may hear if they happen to be on hold on Town of Cary phone lines. And a budget development page has been included on the town's website, where citizens can view the recommended budget after May 3, locate the email address and voicemail box for public input, and be reminded of the formal public hearing date on June 14. We will collect all citizen comments and share them with you as you consider budget priorities and our FY '19 service to our citizens. With that, I'll close.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
That completes the recognitions, reports, and presentations, and takes us to Public
Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out, speakers have three minutes for their comments and may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and we do have one public hearing this evening. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and when that timer goes from a green light to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when it turns to a flashing red light, at that point, I'm going to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. To help have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, I've asked that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all the group to reduce repetitive comments. And also, if you'd like to speak next, after the person currently speaking, I'd ask that you stand on this stairway behind the clerk and wait for your turn. It also signals to me that there's another speaker ready to speak. I thank everyone in our audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mayor and council, my name is Nancy Van Dyke. I'm the president of Windbrook HOA. And I'm here tonight on behalf of all of our residents to thank you for the opportunity to participate in the Neighborhood Improvement Grant Program. I sent you a thank you by email, but I thought it was appropriate to thank you and the town staff in this public venue. When you offer a community program that's really successful, I think it's nice that you get the feedback, and those on the staff from Town of Cary are acknowledged. We applied for a grant. On February 24, owners, tenants, and kids came out to help plant our entry-welcome garden. We planted 80 plants, red camellias, pink azaleas, and junipers. We also installed a low-retaining wall, you'll see that in the picture at the top right, to hold the dirt, and then we mulched the garden. Our development has two streets that are forked. One goes down to Lower Windburn, and the other one goes around the corner to Windward Court. So busy workpeople, nobody knows everybody. Nobody knows anybody. We don't have a gathering space. So on the day that we had this work day, we had 33 people turn out, ages 10 to 80 years old. Neighbors brought their tools, and we really worked hard. We totaled 153 hours working on the project at a credit of $17.25 an hour, equaling $2,639.25. We had $769 in in-kind contributions, which included garden soil, fertilizer, gravel. We had homemade hambiscus, homemade blueberry muffins, cookies, Starbucks coffee, pizza for lunch. We also had cash contributions of about $1,000 from our owners. And you can see on the pictures, we worked hard, but we really had a good time. And people now know each other. When we finished the project, we completed the paperwork, received a check from the Town of Cary for $1,677.17. Thank you. We couldn't have done it without having a grant. We want to thank these staff members, Will Hartey, who helped us really get through the whole thing, Jeff Allen, Tara Adams, Douglas Loveland, Katie Dry, Eric Coles, Kevin Hales, who helped us get through the process, and I'm sure there's many other employees in the Town of Cary who helped get our applications to the proper channels, and we want to thank them, too. Ginny Patterson is a Windbrook resident, and she helped with the grant application. She's also a volunteer and a neighborhood captain with Sarah Justice, who is Cary at Green Program. This project accomplished the goal of the program, getting folks out of their homes, meeting each other, and working on a project for the betterment of the community. And we have great pride every time we drive in and out of Windbrook. So thank you. When the shrubs bloom, we hope you'll drive through our community and see how beautiful it is. And since we don't have a gathering space, that might be our project for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Dyke. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Rudy Zalisak. I'm a homeowner in Beechtree, and I would like to speak against the practicality of a U-turn at Montebello for the proposed hotel, with or without a bump out. Cars exiting the hotel, conservatively, one to two every minute during early morning rush hour, have, I drove down Harrison from that location where the bump out is going to be across from Montebello, have about six seconds to make two lane changes over to the center lane. Most customers of the hotels will be unable to make a U-turn there against early morning traffic. Phone apps like Waze will send them down residential streets near Montebello and Beechtree. Okay, I verified, in a very light traffic situation in the afternoon, not at rush hour, Waze sent me down Montebello to Rock Point to Beechtree to make a U-turn through the residential neighborhood. Rock Point has parking on both sides, is a very tight, twisty road connecting Beechtree and Montebello. It's not a large road like Montebello, like the front part of Montebello. And if you go a little past Montebello, it sends you the other way around to try to make you make a U-turn through Rock Point onto Montebello. And there's a map on the second page that shows the streets, if anyone is not familiar with that neighborhood. These streets were not made for through traffic, and there are pedestrians, schoolchildren, and local people backing out of their driveways on all these streets. There's a recent article in The Atlantic Magazine, which is available online. I have a reference to it on the handout I gave the council, "The Perfect Selfishness of Mapping Apps," talking about how traffic, traditional traffic analysis doesn't take into account people's use of phone apps like Waze, and Google Maps, and mapping apps on the iPhone and so on, that send people down residential streets to take shortcuts. Local citizens know about these shortcuts, but this makes them available to everyone, which will create a lot of, is causing a lot of congestion problems around the country. Anyway, that, it's a very interesting article. It's available online. I asked city council member... Oh, sorry, I just said that. I asked the council to take this into consideration when making a decision about the proposed zoning change on North Harrison. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all? Seeing no one will close, Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Call for a public hearing for the following annexations: 18A02 Rex Hospital, 18A03 Geneva Lloyd Baker, and 17A14 Atlantic Avenue. 17REZ 21 Louis Drive Residential Rezoning and Associated Annexation 16A20 Kathleen Herndon Revocable Trust. 17REZ Regency Park PDD Amendment and Statement of Consistency. Condemnation Resolutions to Secure Necessary Easements for the Good Hope Church Road Water Storage Tank Project. Amend Condemnation Resolution to Secure Necessary Easements for the Carpet and Fire Station Road Bridge Improvements Project and Sewer Rehabilitation Projects. Now, I know that Mr. Smith would like to make a statement at the end of the consent agenda vote, but he doesn't want to pull any of these items. Do council members want to pull any of these items for discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sumut.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and at this time, I'll recognize Mr. Smith.
Yeah, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. You know, sometimes when we get the consent agenda, the reason we have it is when there's just overwhelming support, and it's gone through a rigorous review, and all the items have been addressed, and the concerns have been vetted. But I think once in a while, it's important to kind of step back and peel away a layer and look at just what's involved. We had one case in Regency when it had first come up regarding some parking issues at an office site, and there was a lot of concern about that. And I want to really applaud over that time period, the applicant and the neighborhoods working together, so that by the time those issues were addressed, it gets on consent. And it kind of gets forgotten, but there was a lot of work to that. And, you know, it takes that kind of collaboration, where the neighbors have the opportunity to express their concerns, and then to have a good partner that listens to those. And there were three in particular, where one, there was an initial thought that a reduction in buffer was okay, because it was away from where those citizens were. But once they heard the concerns of the community, they took away that request and maintained that large buffer. And I think that speaks well. There was another concern about some additional parking, and they reduced that. And then I think the most important one was that when you have the different seasons and you have the foliage that is down during the wintertime, the applicant saw that there was a corner, the northwest corner of that property, that was somewhat exposed to that neighborhood, and they agreed to additional landscaping for that northwest corner. So all that stuff happens, and it happens over months, and then it gets resolved, and it gets on a consent. And this happens every day with a lot of different cases. But I just felt like, once in a while, we need to step back and recognize the work that's done, both by the community and by the applicant, and I just wanted to share those observations.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Okay, we now move to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. Same rules apply at public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes to speak, you now have five minutes to speak. Our only public hearing tonight is item 5.1, 17REZ 04 Weston Plan Development District O&amp;I 3 Amendment. Planning Assistant Deborah Granon will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and it will return to us at a future meeting. Ms. Granon.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you. For your consideration this evening is a request to make an amendment to a portion of the Weston PDD. As you may recall, the Weston Plan Development District originated back in the 1980s. It was predominantly an office park. And then there was a zoning amendment that occurred in 2004, when this portion of the property was rezoned from office and institutional uses to allow residential use. So this rezoning request applies just to one of those tracts in the Weston PDD. When the rezoning took place and allowed this Weston Manor neighborhood, there was a requirement for a pedestrian bridge to be included as a zoning condition. And the specific language was that there be an internal sidewalk network to connect to the Black Creek Greenway to the east by a six-foot asphalt trail and bridge. So this was a zoning condition that was offered to help justify the fact that there was not a lot of sidewalk in Weston at the time. This was a way to help explain that residents would be able to move through this office park easily and connect residential neighborhoods, connect office uses, and get to public greenways by way of a private trail system. This shows you the location of the Black Creek Greenway Trail and future trails in the vicinity, and the location of the North Cary Park to the south of the Weston Manor site. And this shows you the location of the private trail that went from the Weston Manor neighborhood at the end of the cul-de-sac on Linton Banks Place, and then connected to the Black Creek Greenway. So the bridge was constructed after the development was completed, the neighborhood was completed, and staff advised the developer they needed to meet this zoning condition and put this bridge in. And so the responsibility fell to the Homeowners Association to install the bridge. This shows you what the bridge looked like in 2012, after it had been first installed approximately in 2007. It was damaged. It was repaired. And then this is what it looked like in 2016. Once again, it was badly damaged. Because of the close proximity to a Town of Cary sewer pipe that crossed the creek at this location, it was necessary to get that bridge removed as soon as possible, so that there would be no damage to that utility line. This is what it looks like today. There is no longer a bridge. Please be assured that we have put up some barricades and some signs to hopefully keep people from still trying to cross in this location. But there is no bridge crossing over to the Black Creek Greenway today. Why not just rebuild the bridge? Well, it's not an ideal location. It is located in stream buffer areas. You would need a much taller, longer bridge to be able to stay out of this floodplain area. This shows you in red where the location was of the previous bridge, and it would take a pretty significant structural project to have something that... take a pretty significant structural project to have something that would stay out of this floodplain location. So in analyzing whether or not these homeowners are justified in their request to remove this zoning condition, staff has looked at a preliminary analysis of the Imagine Carey Community Plan, and we've asked the question, is it still possible to provide an efficient, functional, well-designed system? And also, is there a balance between meeting these high-quality designs and affordability? In this case, affordability for the 43 homeowners who are on the hook for replacing this bridge. So with the first question, is there still a way to get to that Black Creek Greenway? And there is, if you travel south to the North Carey Park. And there you'll find that there is a bridge that meets much higher design standards and has stood the test of time. Now could the homeowners, the 43 homeowners in the Weston Manor Development, replace their small six-foot wide bridge with something like this? It would be extremely expensive, somewhere in the ballpark of $400,000. So that brings us to the second question. Is this really the right balance of affordability and access? And to get from this point, from the residential neighborhood where you would access the private trail to cross the bridge to get down to the North Carey Park, there is a sidewalk network. And then you come to the North Carey Park, and there is a town of Carey Greenway network that gives you an opportunity to cross over and get to the Black Green Creek Greenway. Can you make a loop? Not without getting your feet wet, so, no, that's not the most desirable route, but it's only less than a half a mile from the entrance to the subdivision down to the entrance to the Black Creek, or to the North Carey Park. So it's not an extremely long distance for the neighbors both of Weston Manor and the Bexley neighborhood on the opposite side of the street. So there is a path to get there. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of this request by the neighbors to remove this zoning condition, and the property was posted and advertised. This shows you the end of the cul-de-sac where the private trail is located. There was a community meeting, which occurred back in March of 2017, and the reason why it took so long for this to come before you is because this zoning condition that applied to the Weston Manor neighborhood applies to all 43 homeowners and the HOA. So it took us almost a year to make sure that we had all the signatures of all the property owners in that neighborhood. We do have that. They are all requesting that this zoning condition be removed, so that they are no longer in violation. The calls and questions and what came up at the neighborhood meeting was, can the town take over responsibility for this bridge? And that's not what's being discussed tonight. What's before you tonight is simply the requests from the homeowners and the HOA to remove that zoning condition. There's no discussion about whether or not there's any future funding for this, or whether the town would consider taking that over. That's not, that's not part of this presentation tonight. That would be at a future date. So this concludes staff's presentation. There is a representative here from the Weston Manor neighborhood, and following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. This time I'd like to invite that speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Mike Hunter. I'm one of the original developers, and for all these years that I've stood up in front of you guys, I never thought I'd stand up here and ask you to remove something that we got approved 10 years beforehand, but tonight I am. This has been a, a difficult situation for us, because we put that bridge in to serve not only our homeowners, but also the greater community. We met the requirements that were asked, it was engineered, but the unforeseen floods that unfortunately we've been hit with on Black Creek and that area have created a major problem, one which that is basically insurmountable to be just on the backs of 43 homeowners. As Deborah mentioned to you, we've repaired the bridge. Within a two- or three-year period, we had a 100-year flood, and then a 500-year flood. That's quite remarkable. Next thing, we might expect the arc coming down because... But the real problem is, is that we don't know exactly what needs to be put there. We do know exactly that it's too much of a burden for these homeowners. We hope that there's opportunities to maybe locate somewhere with some type of cooperative, be it the town or other possibilities down the road, but as Deborah said tonight, we're just asking that that burden, as a condition of our original zoning that we had, be removed. These are not only our homeowners as a developer, these are also Carey citizens, and we think that this condition is way too much for them as a small unit. We appreciate your consideration in this. And we have a representative homeowner also would like to speak. Thank you.
If I could get you to speak at the public hearing, which I'm about to open, that would be best. Anything else, Ms. Granon? All right, so now's the public hearing for 17REZ04 Weston Plan Development District, and I would invite that first speaker forward. Reason I do that, it's usually only one person gets to speak for the applicant. We don't want to set a precedence, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Van Arnhem. I am a resident of Weston Manor and a resident of Carey for the last 15 years. I appreciate the time to speak with you briefly today. I'm not sure that I could articulate any better what you've heard from Deborah and Mike on the reasons why we are fully supportive of this rezoning. I think, being a lawyer, I have seen many times in a contract, an act of God, this bridge destruction that has occurred is not something that any planner or expert could have predicted, and nor could any of the residents who've lived there longer than I have foreseen this event. We think, for the three reasons that frankly have already been mentioned, we, we're fully supportive of this. First, again, this is not a minor bridge repair that we could have seen as part of a HOA or anything we signed on. To replace this bridge, you've heard the estimate of $400,000 for 43 homeowners and families. That's difficult. We want to take responsibility for the, the asphalt and the connection to the bridge, but again, we think the financial burden, not only currently, but what would happen with this precedent if we have to maintain a bridge or buy into that bridge? We think it would be impossible to sell our homes. The value of our homes would be tied to that obligation for a long period of time. We very much thank the council and staff for their time working with us, and while I am just a homeowner at this point, it, it is an impressive feat to get everybody in your neighborhood to agree to the same thing. I know Rob Wilson knows that well. All, all, everyone, every neighbor is on board with this. We've signed that. We very much appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing? Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. I have one question, Ms. Granon. You made it very clear we should separate this from what happens after.
Correct.
Why?
Because you cannot obligate the town to enter into any sort of contractual agreement as part of a zoning condition. So when the applicants first came in to speak with us, they had hoped to propose that the town would take on responsibility. So you can discuss that if you choose to at a future date, after you get budget input and consider this at some point in time in the future, but the only thing before you tonight is this specific zoning condition tied to the PDD.
And the reason I ask is because I'm, I don't want the P and Z to go there, and I'm hoping you'll make that...
I will convey that, yes. Thank you.
So that they'll focus on what we want them to focus on and not go down that path. That's my concern. Any other questions?
I was curious, I'm not asking about what happens afterwards, but how will this be, remain safe? Because I saw the great big orange and white. Is the town concerned about that? It looks like a pretty steep drop, or will we do something, or will the homeowners...
We'll keep the signs up there. We are talking to the Homeowners Association about maybe looking at removing a segment of that asphalt path that goes right to the edge. So we're going to continue with negotiations with them about that. They do have access that they need to a BMP that's in that vicinity, so there does need to be a trail that gets back there to access their, their stormwater management device, which is back at the end of the cul-de-sac as well. But if this zoning condition were to go away, then we'll, we'll revisit that. It's not a drastic drop-off. There is a gradual slope that leads down to the edge of the creek, but we want to keep the signage up to make sure that people are not encouraged to, to go and walk across.
Great, thank you.
I would just say that I find the request reasonable and fair. You know, as has been mentioned before, nobody could foresee what the lay of the land and the flooding and the amount of rain and everything that's occurring today back then, you know, and the applicant and the developer have also made one good effort to replace the bridge the first time that it failed. It makes no sense to require the, replace the bridge again just to have it destroyed again. So I think it's fair. It's, it's an unfair burden to put on 43 homeowners a 400,000-plus bridge, which wouldn't surprise me if the number was higher than that. I mean, you're talking $10,000, $15,000 a homeowner. It's just, it's just not fair. So, in the future, I would like us, if we deem this to be a necessary or a needed connection, that it's something that we consider in future year budgets and see what we can do.
I think, I thought where you were going with it was setting the expectation that it's a given, you know, that we're going to do it.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to go there.
Nope.
You know, as we do with a lot of things that come before, it's case by case you look at it, and I think you've set it just right there, where you said, down the road, we'll, we'll have all budget implications, we can look at it. But the last thing, you know, I have this vision of a, no offense, realtor, you know, saying, "Oh, the town's going to build a new super bridge there, so, next week, as soon as you move in." So I just want to make sure that we're not held to a, a false expectation, and that it's viewed down the road on its own merits.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we will see it at a future date. Thank you, Ms. Granon. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is on, is 6.1, is on 17REZ29 Twin Lakes PDD Amendment, MU3 North. Senior Planner Katie Dry will give the report, and we'll hear from our planning board and their recommendation, and we may take action on this item tonight. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Council. This is a request to amend the existing Twin Lakes Plan Development District at 3624 Davis Drive. The site's located on the eastern side of Davis, between the intersections of Airport Boulevard and Lake Grove Boulevard. The site's currently undeveloped, with the exception of an existing cell tower located on the southeastern portion of the site. To the north of the site will be the Twin Lakes Center, which is where the future Wegmans shop, grocery store will be located. And across Davis Drive, Airport Boulevard, is a recent rezoning that was approved, which will provide more commercial development. This is a part of Carey, which is adjacent to Morrisville in many areas. You can see just across Davis, and even to the south, is within Morrisville jurisdiction. The current zoning for the property is planned development district. It's part of the Twin Lakes PDD, which is a PDD of more than 200 acres. The five remaining undeveloped parcels are designated for mixed use, and these are called MU parcels. So there's a total of five that are listed here. They have shared allowances for retail, office, restaurant, multifamily, and assisted living. The applicant's proposing to create a new sub-district with a northern portion of MU3, which would be called MU3 North, and they're, and they're proposing, proposing to limit the use to a maximum of 200 multifamily units. The remaining MU parcels would still have a full allowance to uses in the square footages that are listed on this table. With this revision, the applicant's proposing to limit the use to age-restricted, to age-restricted units, meaning that 80% of the dwellings would have at least one person age 55 or older, maximum of 200 multifamily units. They are proposing to increase the community gathering space to 2,000 square feet, set a parking ratio of 1.3 spaces per unit. They're proposing the removal of the buffer between this site and an adjacent residential parcel. This is an illustration of the buffer map with the Twin Lakes Plan Development District, and you can see there is an adjacent single-family parcel that's located adjacent to this site, and on the PDD map, there was a 25-foot type A buffer shown. So the applicant's proposing the removal of the buffer if this single-family parcel can be developed in conjunction with a larger site. They're also proposing to remove the existing plantings and replant the streetscape. This is a picture of the streetscape along Davis Drive. The applicant submitted a tree survey of the site, and they've noted in their justification, the survey revealed no significant trees or upper story specimen trees. They've also noted that the streetscape would need to be disturbed to accommodate the burial of power lines. Staff has evaluated the case using the Imagine Carey Community Plan. First, we look at the future growth framework map, which shows a site within a commercial center. And commercial centers are defined as having a shopping center of about five to 10 acres or more anchored by a supermarket. Commercial centers can also have residential office or institutional uses that are either mixed vertically or horizontally on adjacent sites. According, according to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, there is a greenway corridor located adjacent to the site to the east. The greenway corridor extends around the existing pond and is on town-owned property. The applicant has met with the town to discuss the option for construction of the greenway adjacent to the site to the east. The construction of the greenway has not been offered as a zoning condition through this process. However, the applicant would be required to contribute to a recreation fund payment and could seek reimbursement credit for this fee during the construction of the trail. So the specifics of this would be finalized during the site plan review process for the Staff finds the rezoning to be consistent with the Imagine Carey Community Plan. We find that the site is in a commercial center on the future growth framework map, which could support multifamily uses. The residential uses, again, may be mixed either vertically or horizontally. In this case, it would be horizontally. Additional, this would also provide additional housing options for seniors, and so therefore staff's recommendation is for approval. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of eight to one, and Board Vice Chair Ryan Eads is here to speak to the discussion.
This case was pretty straightforward for us. The board was pretty much unanimous in our view that the request was appropriate for the site and also provided a good fit. There was one dissenting member that felt that even though it was a good project overall, the PDD explicitly prohibits new cell tower from being placed in the middle of an existing neighborhood, so they didn't find much sense in placing a new neighborhood adjacent to an existing cell tower. Other than that, we found the request was appropriate.
Very good. Questions? Thank you.
So this concludes staff's presentation. We are here for any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Comments? Or a motion?
I just want to understand a little bit on this, the, the trail. I know you read those things, I hear those things, but what you read about the trail is that they're not going to construct it where they can contribute money toward the future construction, and you said about reimbursement, when it's completed, I, I didn't quite catch on.
Sure. So this site would be required to pay a recreation fund payment fee. They could, rather than pay the fee, construct, construct the trail and get credit for that fee.
That's the part I didn't...
So, so they have met with town staff to look into options for that.
Okay, okay.
Is that it?
Okay.
I think that's it for me.
Ms. Robinson?
Okay, I move to approve 17REZ29 and adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to our second discussion item, Panther Creek... Panther Creek Greenway and Mills Park Trailhead Bid Award Architect. Sarah Alexandra will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Alexandra.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I will be following up on the bid award for the Panther Creek Greenway and Mills Park Phase Two projects. In two thousand twelve, the community investment bonds were approved by Cary residents, which include funding for the next phase of Panther Creek Greenway. This one point two mile segment runs in an east-west direction and is located along the northern edge of Mills Park. This greenway extends to the Cameron Pond subdivision, utilizes the existing boardwalk built by NCTOT under I five forty in anticipation for this greenway, and connects to the existing pedestrian tunnel located at the Green Level Church Road that connects to Cary Park Lake. A connection would also be made to Mills Park and Mills Park Mill and Elementary Schools with an additional distance of point three miles. In addition to linking to the Mills Park schools, completion of this phase of Panther Creek Greenway will link to twenty miles of existing greenways and street-side trails and tie to several neighbor nearby neighborhoods, which includes Cameron Pond, Cary Park, and South Bridge subdivisions. Based on the Cary Greenway Master Plan, the Panther Creek Greenway will eventually tie to the existing greenway and street-side trails in all directions. To the east, it will link to the new Carpenter Fire Station Park that is currently being master planned and the new YMCA. To the north, Panther Creek Greenway will link to existing street-side trails to the McCrimmon Neighborhood Park that is also being master planned. And to the west, through a network of greenway and street-side trails, the Panther Creek Greenway will tie to the American Tobacco Trail. In addition to Panther Creek Greenway, bond funding was also approved for the next phase of Mills Park. The two thousand fifteen approved plan for Mills Park included a playground for children, parking lot for thirty cars to serve for the park and the greenway, a restroom and picnic shelter combo, and a graded open field and connector trails. Council identified the need for playgrounds for the age range of ten to twelve, so staff engaged members of the teen council to participate in the playground workshop to help design the equipment. And here are the results.
That's great.
Greenways and parks are special types of construction. Majority of contractors that perform this type of specialized work are specialized in grading and paving. So to receive more competitive pricing, staff separated out the grading and paving elements of both projects for contractor bid, so what we have presented here tonight. We received two bids on January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and their contractor contracting was a low bidder at three point six million. The remaining park items such as play equipment, the restroom building, and plantings are estimated at two point two million, which will be purchased separately and will be coordinated into six into the sixteen-month construction window. At the total project cost of five point million, how do we pay for all this? So looking at the current funding, in two thousand twelve, both projects received community bond funding with intent that staff would leverage the funds for lap federal funding from Campo for Panther Creek Greenway and Mills Park as a trailhead and the connector trails. We were granted federal funding in two thousand fifteen to bring our current funding to three point four million. After we received bids at the end of two thousand seventeen for both projects and assessing that the cost for Mills was significantly over budget, staff reached out to Campo again for additional funding for the Mills Park trailhead and connector trails, to which we received another one point four million awarded just yesterday from Campo, the Campo Executive Board. A remainder of one million is still needed to complete both projects in its entirety and fulfill the federal match, to which staff proposes to use park payment and lieu. Overall, forty percent of the project is being funded by federal funds, allowing us to do more with our resources. So staff has a four-part recommendation that council can vote to approve in one motion. Staff recommends that we award the construction of Panther Creek Greenway and Mills Park Phase Two to narrow in contracting for three point six million, adopt the resolution documenting the award, appropriate one million to the project for park payment and lieu, and authorize the town manager to enter into a supplemental agreement with NCTOT to receive additional funds from Campo. Construction is anticipated to start at the end of the spring and to be completed by the end of two thousand nineteen. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Good report and exciting to me.
Yeah.
So thoughts, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion whenever. I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Just want to thank staff for all your efforts to work with Campo and the feds to help acquire funding and grant funding for this. It makes doing projects like this so much easier and less of a burden on Cary taxpayers. This is exciting. This is going to be a great asset for that area of the community.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you from being a member of Campo, having stuff ready at the right time is key in getting those funds, and you guys do that. So there were two amendments yesterday, and this was one of them. So thank you so much for getting that and saving our taxpayers tons of money.
Thank you, Council.
I think it's, I do think it's, you know, we sometimes overlook this part, is that that federal funding comes from us too.
Yes, it does.
Sometimes we like think it's coming from somewhere else.
Yeah, the money tree.
We're a donor city. We give money.
Yep, certainly do.
This is an example of what's good.
We're getting some of it back. That's right.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to our last discussion item, six point three sports venue project funding agreement. Planner Sandy Bailey will present the item, and council may take action. Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, Council. In May of two thousand sixteen, council approved a staff report authorizing staff to apply for hospitality tax funding from Wake County for venue improvement projects at Wake Med Soccer Park and Cary Tennis Park. The town has since been awarded that funding, and the county is prepared a funding agreement for the town's execution. The town has been successful in previous awards for hospitality tax funding, and this table provides an overview of the funding received and applied for by the town. In two thousand thirteen, the town was awarded ten million dollars to be spread out over seven years for projects at Wake Med Soccer Park, Cary Tennis Park, and the USA Baseball Venue. Projects at Wake Med and Cary Tennis Park have since been completed, and the proposed clubhouse facilities at the USA Baseball National Training Center are currently in design. In two thousand sixteen, the town applied for just over one million dollars in funding for projects at Wake Med Soccer Park and Cary Tennis Park, and this is the funding to which the staff report refers. And in two thousand seventeen, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was awarded to the town to complete an asset management study for the three sports venues, and those assessments are currently underway. This past January, council approved submission of a funding proposal for lighting and sound projects at Wake Med Soccer Park and Coke Booth Amphitheater. That application was submitted in February, and we anticipate the county making award announcements this spring or summer. The town's success in hospitality tax funding awards is due in large part to the economic impact that the town's venues have on the region. And you can see here some of the highlights of the town's sports and entertainment venues, including the estimated two hundred million dollars in economic impact since the facilities have been open. The current award and funding agreement before you includes a little over six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in Wake County funding for improvements at Wake Med Soccer Park, including Wi-Fi installation at the ten thousand-seat Solent Stadium, as well as conversion of one of the grass fields to synthetic turf and the addition of lighting to that field, both of which will allow increased play and use. The Wake County award requires just under a one point seven million dollar match from the town, and those funds will need to be appropriated. The funding agreement also includes three hundred and ninety thousand dollars from Wake County for the installation of tournament-level lighting on two courts at the Cary Tennis Park, as well as resurfacing of two courts and additional bleacher seating in key locations. Match funding for this project totals seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and has already been appropriated. Upon execution of the funding agreement, projects at both of these venues are anticipated to be completed in the summer of two thousand twenty. Staff recommends council adoption of the resolution approving the agreement for sports venue project funding, authorization for the town manager to execute the agreement, recognition of the one million sixty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in interlocal funding, and appropriation of just under one point seven million dollars in matching funds. Thank you, Council, and staff's available to answer questions.
Questions or comments? Another exciting one.
Great.
Yay.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda. We are now ready to go into closed session. Ms. Bush.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to GS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A. And three, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town to prevent and to, let's see, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS one forty-three, three eighteen, ten E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we move into closed session.
We'll reconvene our meeting. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously and we are adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of KIRI TV. Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.